March 17th meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board to order. Asked for a roll call of members, starting with our Select Board Representative.
Neil MacIver.
Neil MacIver is here. Planning Board Member Mark Sturgeon.
Here.
Chris? John Chris?
Yeah.
Phil Amaro. We are missing Mike Ahern, Rebecca Hansen. Alternates. We have Sue Wood.
Yep.
We do not have Peter, Julia, Steve Whitman, Michael Bouchard.
I think Mike might be on the.
Mike's on.
Oh, it's Mike. Hi, Michael. All right, Mike is remote.
I'm remote, sorry about that, I'm sick.
Well, that's okay. I'm glad you're here. Thanks for joining us. The first item on our agenda is Members and Election of Officers. So, we do have a handout of Members' Appointment Dates and Terms, which Staff has provided us. Thank you.
Can I point out a, sorry to interrupt, but can I point out a couple of new changes to it?
Yeah.
So, Susan got appointed by the Select Board on Monday night and got sworn in, so she's now a regular member of the Planning Board.
Oh, thank you.
Wow.
And Neil, I guess, is our Select Board Rep as of Monday night, and Zach is our alternate, and he's also here. And we now have two vacancies as alternate members because Steve Whitman has resigned from the vacant, from the alternate position that he was there. So, there's two, so our two, we have three alternates, Zach, which is the alternate for Neil, and Michael Bouchard and Peter Julia.
Great. Welcome, Sue.
Thanks.
Glad to have you as a member.
Michael could be voting tonight because, Bouchard could be voting because Neil, I mean, Mike Ahern and Rebecca are not here, so. Can I say that?
I will seat Mike Bouchard then. For Rebecca Hansen, who's not here. And the first item on our agenda is actually Election of Officers. So, we do have three officer positions. We have an elected Chair, a Vice Chair, and a non-recording Secretary position. My understanding is that Rebecca is willing to continue to serve as Chair, but doesn't feel the obligation to do so, and would like to open it up for other nominations if there are others who are interested.
I'd be willing.
You'd be willing.
I'd be happy to serve.
Yep.
I would not.
That's fine.
Well, thank you.
All right, I'm going to step outside normal rules of procedure and nominate John to be Chair. I do need a second.
Second that.
All right. Thanks. Is there any discussion? So, we have a motion and a second to nominate John to the position of Chair of the Planning Board. Any discussion, concerns? Michael, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, no discussions.
All right. All those in favor of John taking over as Chair?
Aye.
Great. Aye? You're it.
All right.
More elections to do.
Do we finish the officers first?
Yep.
Yeah.
Or do I finish the officers?
You're it. I'll let you.
All right, well, we also have an opening for Vice Chair.
We do. I'd be willing to continue, although Rebecca would as well. So, I'm okay either way. I'm going to nominate Rebecca, since I would be okay stepping away from the role. I do have other responsibilities and boards I'm serving on, and if Rebecca's still willing and.
I believe she is.
She did, I confirmed via text and email. Actually, June, you were copied on the email that she was willing to serve, so. So, I'll move the nomination of Rebecca for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
All right, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays?
Aye, aye.
No nays?
Okay. Mike, you are the Vice, no, Rebecca is the Vice Chair.
Rebecca's Vice.
I'm a little foggy today.
That's fine.
All right, and then we have the non-recording Secretary, which is a position I was in previously.
What exactly is the?
Third in line to chair a meeting if nobody's here.
Okay.
Non-recording Secretary, so no actual, like, record keeping or anything.
Sure.
In case one of us goes down and you can.
Yeah, true, if Staff isn't available, although we always have recordings, I think. Yeah.
I think the Secretary position's more for communities that don't have planning staff, so, you know, sometimes that can step up too.
I'd be willing, but Mark, if you want to, you're welcome to it as well.
Is there a second?
Second. For which are you second, who's nominated?
Was there a nomination?
Oh, I thought you nominated him.
I'm sorry, I said I would be willing, but you're welcome as well.
I thought you made a motion for it.
I'd like to nominate Phil.
All right.
Okay.
He's really good.
Sorry about that. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, roll call, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Aye, aye.
All right, so that's done.
All right. Phil, you are the non-recording Secretary. So, next up is a review of minutes. If you all had a chance to look, you didn't. I don't think I saw anything that really stuck out to me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so moved.
Great.
Communications received. Have there been any communications?
No.
Okay. So, next up is the Applications and Public Hearings, continuation of our February 17th public hearing for the Site Plan Application for Midstate Community Development Corporation. Before we begin, June, do you want to get us up to speed on any communications received?
Sure. So, I guess, in your packet of information that was either emailed, and I believe everything is printed in front of you, there's, kind of go through, sort of step by step, what's happened since February 17th Planning Board meeting. You should have a copy of an email from February 18th. Mine was stapled on the back of the minutes there, so maybe it, you might want to. I also, I think we had sent it via email. Just quickly, I outlined to the applicant's representative, Chris Solomon, basically five things that the Board had discussed, you know, asking them to consider closing the curb cut near the, reconfiguring the entrance exit by the, on the south end of the property, addressing winter maintenance of the steps and documenting that on the site plan. About the drainage system, some of the questions we had, and that it was the Board's interest in having it reviewed externally by our Towns Engineer, or possibly, as we had discussed, by HEB, because they're doing the downtown drainage. Documenting the previously noted easement from 2006, documenting that on the plan, that there was going to be some kind of an easement to the town, and that they should meet with Water and Sewer, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer. So, that was the day after, Friday, the day after the meeting. The, on March 11th, let's find my notes, sorry. I did call and talk with Chris on March 1st to sort of see where things were, because I hadn't really heard anything back, and just said it would be helpful if we had new information prior to, you know, end of last week, so we could get things to the Planning Board. So, he said he would try to do that. They did submit some additional information, which you also have in your package. There are some photographs, there was a, more details added to the site plan to show the drainage lines in the parking lot. Kent Brown from Brown Engineering had documented some photos of those drainage structures, and a memo addressing some of the things that I had emailed previous, so trying to go through the sort of chronology there. So, they also added the easement on that upper parking lot, but we don't have any easement at the registry, it's just on that plan. They, in that memo, said that Midstate intends to maintain the steps in the parking lot, so I think that should be changed to "will maintain." They did meet with Water and Sewer, is my understanding, and Water and Sewer had previously, I think, written to Joseph and had some, you know, they will also look at it more within the building permit process, so at least they have made communication, so I think that's in good shape. Parking was addressed a bit because, we'll talk about parking in a second here, and, so, yeah, they did agree to partially close the curb cut just in front of where the exit for the ATM, because that canopy's going to be enclosed, so you can't come out through there, so they agreed that that could be closed in and sidewalk added, just that little strip there. The only aspects of the drainage is just really adding some pipes and then documentation of the structures, but we still don't, you know, we need to kind of look, think, is that enough information? So, then also the Zoning Board met on March, I forgot the date, first Tuesday of March. So, you also received an email or a copy, I think, of a staff report from March 11th, some updates about that. And on that, yeah, it outlined some of what I just said, and on March 1st, the Zoning Board met and talked, and did conditionally issue a special exception for the medical facility there with four conditions. I do want to read that, because there was quite a bit of discussion about this. One of the conditions is that both properties, because there are two properties as this, both properties shall remain available for the proposed use of this medical facility. The applicants shall continue to allow off-hours use of the parking lots by nearby businesses, because that was stated in their actual application for the, they offered that and said they would continue that. So, the Zoning Board wanted that as a condition to ensure that that happened. There was some discussion about ADA compliant routes between the building, which needs to still be kind of looked at, and I wish Peter Julia was here, because he had had some comments on that.
Is there a diagram in the later part of this?
Yeah, well, let me, yeah, sort of, and then there was a lot of discussion about the three kind of parking areas. There's one, upper one on Gould Terrace, and they had indicated they wanted to use the southern one next to Ladders for employee parking, and the Board wants that upper one off of Gould Terrace to be for employees and not the southern one. And one of the main reasons is if it would be just a better access for the customers, clients coming in and out of the site for the medical facility to have access off of Main Street, and if there was, you know, hourly turnover, as they've indicated, of patients or clients coming in there, that would be a lot more traffic on Russell Street, coming down in a very poor, you know, whereas if employee comes in the morning and leaves at the end of the day, kind of thing, hopefully that would be less traffic in a residential, busy residential neighborhood.
Presumably, if there's someone with ADA issues, they could still park down below.
Yes, that would obviously have to be accommodated that way, so, yeah, if an employee needed an ADA, I mean, basically, an ADA, you can kind of park anywhere, so. So, those are the four conditions that I think should also be kind of noted on the site plan at some point. And they also indicated they did apply, I had talked to somebody at DOT, and the change of use was going to trigger a new driveway permit, so they have applied for that. And, so, we had a couple of recommendations, but then also since then, on March 15th, we got this revised plan, so I looked, it took me a few days for Joseph and I to look it over, and had a, so on March Tuesday, March 15th, I wrote to them, so I think you have that email with a number of bullets, so. One thing we noted is that there is, there was some inconsistency in the numbering of the parking spaces. So, they have sent, Brown Engineering did send in another plan, I think it was yesterday, that corrected that, so that one's basically taken care of. But I think even in the narrative between the Zoning Board and the Planning Board, there was some inconsistency, so the total number of spaces, I believe, is just 46, all right? They had originally talked about adding three around what's on the southern end, that canopy that was going to be closed in, but those have been removed, so that kind of changes, and there was a miscalculation somewhere that I, so then there's a note, and that has been corrected. You do not have that copy in front of you, because I just got it, I don't, maybe you do, I guess maybe you do. Okay, sorry. So, again, reviewing what I had, these comments, this bit that they have indicated in their memo that they intend to maintain the steps, but what we had heard in the previous meeting a month ago is that they will maintain them, there's a difference in that. Adding the ZBA conditions, they've added sort of dumpsters, and it's not real clear to me where they will be accessing them very well. Same thing with propane tanks, I'm going to show you a couple of slides here in a second. And then this drive-up ATM machine in the last little bit of points here. So, if you don't mind me sharing my screen, if that's okay? Okay. I think it'll be easier, hopefully, for me to. So, I'm actually going to keep it on this view, just so I can move around a little bit. So, this is the revised plan with, I believe, the number of parking spaces on it. So, one of the areas is kind of this side, the southern end, down between there and Ladders. I went down and walked around one day, and I happened to see this one day, and realized that Ladders uses this entrance as an exit, and it's pretty documented by the traffic pattern on the wet marks on the road, because coming onto Main Street, making that, if somebody was coming out of this spot, turning left, they go through the puddle, where there isn't a puddle pulling in, you see what I'm saying? So, that, the marks on the road, just by chance, the wet tire marks there, showed me where, how this site is being used. So, this is not shown anywhere on this plan. That Ladders, you go in on the southern end of Ladders, you can drop off things, and people are driving around the backside of that and coming out what they're showing as the entrance. And with the angled parking here, with higher turnover of vehicles, I'm really concerned about this, so I wanted to point that out. There's a little bit of a closer view. So, there's also this dumpster that I'm guessing is accessed, being the angle of it, from this parking lot. And again, that's not shown, so there's some shared access here. I also don't think that was part of the driveway permit application, because we get copies of that. They just showed it as a change of use for a medical facility, not with the additional exit at an entrance. Does Ladders have a right-of-way there, they have permission? I will have to ask that. There is a sign here, this may be a little hard to say, it says, "Notice this parking lot is reserved for Midstate Health Center, Ladders, Thrift Shop, Step Ladders and the American Legion, any vehicles other than that will be towed." The ZBA specifically had another business, and they also, I mentioned the Flying Monkey, using lots, this parking area. So, this sign is kind of in conflict with not allowing additional businesses to do that. And then this ATM area, currently, these cars are regularly, have had regularly had cars parked there as parking spots, but that, where those two cars will be enclosed. So, what I didn't realize was that this ATM, because that, again, what the application was for, the medical facility, not medical facility and drive-up ATM, which is existing, but how do you accommodate that with this traffic flow there, given the angled parking? So, this is another view back towards behind Ladders, so you can see that kind of pathway, looking over towards Rite Aid, and then the ATM from that side. So, again, with the angled parking that they're suggesting, and cars coming in and out, you know, it's, and then where, on the car that's parked under the canopy, when that's enclosed, right behind that will be where these dumpsters are. I'm not quite sure how you would access that. And then the propane tanks are also a little bit of a concern. So, if you're, if you are actually following the circulation they show in the plan, once this is enclosed, and a car's at the ATM machine, how are you going to get out? So, I just wanted, I'm not the best artist, but you also have this in front of you, I think. So, what I was going to suggest here was looking at, could there be, you know, and I, this is not to scale, but have maybe a two-way entrance exit here, this darker red stripe, close that whole section off. They agreed to close off the beginning part of it, but adding additional sidewalk, closing off that curb cut, so then you just would have straight head-in parking, so somebody can come in and pull in, and then back up, and then pull out. So, I think this is something we can ask their engineer to consider from a traffic safety point of view. The dumpster, no, excuse me, the propane tanks over here, you know, again, with the existing configuration, I'm not quite sure how you get to that, and if a propane truck is filling the tank, how are you going to get around it, if you're back, you know, trying to maneuver through there?
I'm feeling puzzled. Did you say that the ATM is going to remain?
They're now saying the ATM is remaining, there's this little note right there.
Where your head-in parking is, or?
Well, there could be a little bit of, again, I'm not, this is just a sketch, it's a concept.
I'm just trying to, like, juggle all these things in my brain.
So, it could be a walk-up ATM, is what, I don't think you could have a drive-up with this configuration, certainly, yeah. So, it could be a walk-up, I believe ATM machines can be moved, so maybe it can be moved over to this side to be more of a, you know. So, these are just things I've observed, just wanted to share those thoughts, because I just really feel like pedestrian safety on Main Street is something to really consider, and the traffic, the traffic pattern that they have suggested here, I do not think, first of all, is accurate because of the Ladders exit, and should have some additional review, so. Does that make sense?
It does.
Lots of details there, but. So, I will stop sharing.
Actually, June, can you go back to your photo of the dumpster?
The Ladders dumpster?
Yeah. That was my question, is, do we know that is Ladders?
I don't know, it appears to be, to me.
Yeah, that would be my assumption as well, and it, I mean, based on the plan we have and the photo, I would assume that's on the Ladders lot.
Yeah.
It looks like it would be on the left side, based on its distance from the parking spots, can, isn't there a photo further up?
There was another one, yeah. Also, they have storage containers, I didn't know about.
That seems to be like a moving target, there are storage containers for all the stuff.
That's the one, so I would imagine that the, you can kind of, I'm imagining that that line we see that's a seam is probably close to the property boundary.
Yeah.
And I would guess that dumpster is probably on Ladders lot.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, it may continue to be accessed from this driveway, though, which, you know, as long as they're neighbors and they have that agreement.
Right. But you can't, and you can't have, you know, how are they going to get out? That's my first picture. You know, if they're using what, where these cars, this is on the far-left side, if you can see my cursor here, is shown on the site plan as an entrance only, and the exit being here.
Right.
So, Ladders is coming, you're going to have somebody pulling in, with just, there's going to be more turnover based on the new, change of use. So, that's my concern with seeing if there's another way to reconfigure it. I'm not saying my plan is best, but, and it needs some, you know, be drawn to scale, and, so I just offer it as a suggestion, so.
I'd like to hear from the applicant about this.
Yeah.
I'd also, I'm just kind of curious. It comes back to the question, like, I guess there is no easement here or established right away, except for, like, use for a very long time? Like, I'm just wondering, like, what the obligation is here? I guess we can hear from the.
I think that Midstate should explain if there's an easement or what the arrangement is there, so you can.
Okay.
Can I just make, so, if they don't do the curb cut, then all of this is kind of a moot point, because they can go in and they can go back out, the ATM can still be used, and just the way it's been for however many years, is that, is that true? Is that, I mean, we're not, we're not telling them they have to change their parking spots, they have to give up the curb cut, all that stuff. A change of use because of the nature of, you know, this not being employee parking. If this is client-patient parking, there would be more sort of in-and-out turnover, would be expected from that, so that's where I think you might see more conflicts. It has been in the past, because you can't, if I go down to. So, when I, I'm just looking at the plan that they submitted, where they, they have the dumpster, it's the one you have marked up, because I'm looking at both options here. So, before you marked it up, they have the dumpsters at the end, right at the end there. Yep, they are right here, yep. Yep, so if, I mean, I don't, I guess if they, if the truck, and really, I think this is all up to them to figure this out, but if the truck went in, dumped back up a little bit, and then could go out the existing place there, I don't see that that's a big problem for the dumpsters. You know, again, I would ask, you know, I think my suggestion is make, just look at it and have them explain it, and think about the turning radius there, you know, there's front-loading dumpster empty and back-rear one, so, you know. Okay, so we should listen to what they have to present, then? I'm just, I'm showing you the observations and kind of comments, and, again, if somebody is sitting here making a, you know, bit of a transaction at the ATM, the inclination is going to be to go out the entrance, you know, with that angled parking, and, you know, and it's.
Assuming they're driving.
Pretty open there, because the sidewalk's so deteriorated. That's going to change with our project this summer, so, that, regardless, that will be more defined as an entrance, you know, and not as kind of, there's not much sidewalk, you can just kind of pull in and out there, you know. So, that's going to, that, that will be just different after the Towns' roadwork happens, too, so. Anyway, I'll wait until they're done.
Well, is the applicant present on Zoom?
Yes, they are.
Would you like to speak to the issues of traffic flow on the south end of the property, or anything else that we've addressed?
Yes, Chris Solomon, Seminole Architects. We also have Bob Cloud here. Evan Baum. So, yeah, I don't know how we want to, if we wanted to go back and go through the February 17th memo, I was thinking we'd go through the February 17th memo, skip over to June's notes, and then we can jump into the site.
And address some of these issues that we're talking about now. Does that make sense? I mean, or did you guys have any questions on the February 17th memo that we had submitted? I think it'd be good just to go through and talk about it.
Look here, what do you have to say? Do we have this?
Yeah, so, the, on the, the first note on Gould Terrace. And the steps extending from Gould Terrace down to the lower parking lot. Midstate does intend to maintain these steps for their use during normal business hours. It is not the intent of Midstate to maintain these at all hours of the night for, as we know, college kids' use of walking across the property. So, that's, we do intend to maintain these for their use, for their business use. So, we want to make that clear, that we're not, we're not looking to maintain these 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Also, just to clarify, that upper parking lot at Gould Terrace, that's, is what I recall from our Zoning Board hearing, that parking lot was, they wished that we use that for employee parking. They didn't limit the south parking lot for not being able to use that for employee parking. The intent is employees would park both up at the upper lot and at the south end of the property, and that your normal patrons coming and going from the facility would use the parking lot to the north along Main Street.
Chris, can I ask, how many employees would be onsite on a normal day? Do you have a rough idea, ballpark?
I do, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, this is Bob Cloud. 12 to 16, the most there'd be is 16.
They've said 12 before, and at the Zoning Board, it was indicated as 12, so.
Okay, thank you.
We have, you know, more than enough parking spaces, we have 14 up top, seven down below, knowing that, you know, not only will we have accessibility issues with the patrons, but also for employees. So, that lot to the south is intended to be used for employee parking. The goal of the Zoning Board was to limit, they didn't want to have visitor parking and patrons coming and going through a rural neighborhood to use that parking lot. Just wanted to clarify that. The easement at the upper lot, we have added the easement, that we're providing public parking access to the neighboring property, you know, if the Town ever does purchase that property and adds in public parking, that easement is there for that use. We did meet with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, and you'll see on the plan that we've noted where the Water and Sewer comes into the building. They did mention that the intent is with your upcoming, you know, potential project that you guys are looking at for the summer, that the fire suppression system would come off of the domestic water line and have a dedicated line for that. So, we are aware of that, and we know that, you know, with this work and the revisions at the main entrance, we would be, you know, accommodating that new pipe going into the building. So, again, that's a work in progress, we'll have to see what you guys come up with, with your plans in the future, before we can, you know, develop our own plans to react to what you guys have developed there. Parking. Again, we've. Again, we've issued the clarifying site plan, we have forty-six parking spaces, and we can go through and, and address any, any other concerns you have with parking. Overall, we have more than, than is needed to accommodate the, the business functions of the building onsite, although we don't need to have any here at this property, and we could just be utilizing all on-street parking. We do have the staff report, excuse me, the, the report that Kent Brown put together. We can go through that if we wanted to look at the photos. We did go onsite, we opened all the storm drains, we documented that the drainage does align with the original drawings and with the, the letter that Andrews Construction had submitted. Everything onsite is currently working. We're there on a day when there was significant melting happening. We could see that the drain pipes were working, we have photo documentation of that, and we've also documented that on the plans. I would like to ask, with the, the third-party review that you're looking, if the planning board could, could give us a little bit more clarity as to what they would be looking for in that third-party review, as we aren't proposing any real new work onsite other than reworking our entry grading to accommodate whatever you guys come up with in the future that had, that engineering has not been completed yet on your end, but we know that we'll have some rework of the entryway to accommodate grading, but just wondering, what is the goal of that third-party review and what items would you be looking for? Just, it'd be helpful on our end so that we can offer any clarity to that engineer if there's anything in particular that you guys are looking for in that review.
Anyone like to address this?
Are there other items on the list that we can move on to? Can we come back to that?
Yes. Yeah, so again, just to clarify, you know, all of the drainage here, we've documented the existing storm drainage and, you know, typically with a third-party review, it's reviewing engineering. Other than documenting existing conditions, there has been no civil engineering that's taken place, so just want to know what you guys are looking for in that review.
Do we have confirmation that everything still flows through there?
Yes, that was documented in that photographic report when we were onsite.
I guess I'm, without having seen that report, I, it's, I'm kind of relying on the opinion of staff as to how we go for it.
I've got a couple of notes. Why don't you go through the rest of the memo and we can come back.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
They can continue on.
Yeah, do you mind if I'll share my?
If you want to share that, that'd be, I would, I would appreciate it.
Do you mind making me a screen sharing post? So we, onsite, here we've, we've documented where each photo was taken on the property. Again, this is all of the catch basins and drainage on the site. So with that, we have some documentation of that. You can see water flowing into these, these drains and out. It was a good day for that. This also shows the drain coming from the building. Again, everything here aligns with the, the dimensions and the locations that it was noted on the original plans produced by Horizon's engineering back when this was originally constructed. Again, another storm drain, you can see water flowing into these pipes. Again, another documentation. I could scroll back if you guys had questions where, you know, photo three was. More drains, water actively flowing into these catch basins. Again, all drainage is working properly. We pulled this, these drain covers, and then we've also documented, you know, where that water has flown from the, the upper end of, of the neighboring parking lot. Looks like there was some paving that happened and possibly this is running off the public roads across their paved parking lot onto Midstate's property. So again, there's some erosion happening here. So that's the, you know, the photographic documentation that all the storm drains have been working properly, and again, those were all the, we just went through all the storm drains that were on property, so. You know, we're, we're in acceptance if, if a, a third-party review needs to happen. Just be good to know some action items and what you guys should be looking for in that engineering exercise.
Thank you. I mean, that, it looks like it makes sense, but I would defer to our engineer and June on this.
Okay. So keeping going, the curving. Just hop back into, share the plan again. Just get rid of this. Too many things on the screen. So we are in acceptance of extending this granite curving here at the, say, the south end of the property, which would extend out in front of the existing drive-through. That would allow the town to pick up one on-street parking space here. We are not looking to entertain re-grading, re-striping and closing off this entryway here. Midstate has a, a legal agreement with, with an existing bank for this ATM, an existing contract that they're not looking to breach, so this ATM is going to remain. Also, currently ladders does cross the property to access their dumpster as well as, as they are traveling around the building. There is not an existing easement, nor are we looking to provide that. We do, you know, wish to continue as nice neighbors, and we didn't see that that was an issue having traffic flow around the building, but it seems like it has become an issue. Just wanted to clarify that, that easement is not in place and I think the previous owners in Midstate just want to be good neighbors and it's allowed people to travel around. There's no reason why that, that traffic pattern can't extend out and around and come out so that there's not somebody coming and going. So again, I think that, that can maintain, but, but we're not looking to provide them an, an actual easement across the property for their parking needs.
Can I ask for some clarification? The ATM, we were, we were talking about a moment ago, drive-through versus walk-up. Is there anything in the agreement you've made that stipulates it will be drive-through or not?
There is a contractual agreement for a drive-up ATM. Yeah, and that's been there for about twenty, thirty years or more, so this, this traffic pattern here, again, there's going to be lots of mainly staff parking here, although it's not restricted, is, this has been here for thirty-some years, it's, it's worked properly. We're not proposing any changes to it, we're actually proposing, you know, to make this, this better. So we're really, this, this is the plan we're looking to present tonight and not looking to entertain rebuilding this, this over here. It works well and provides, you know, plenty of circulation and parking for both midstate and after-hours use in the community. So, moving on. Again, we talked about the, the steps, engineering, and we did meet with Plymouth Water Builder and Sewer. So that was the February 17th memo. Moving on to the notes presented Tuesday on March 15th. So we, we've amended the, the parking spaces on the application. Again, there's, there's more than enough parking spaces on the property itself as well as, you know, we, we essentially could be using on-street parking, which we aren't intending to do. We will be maintaining these steps for the use of Midstate's employees coming and going. So those, those steps will be maintained. We, we are not looking to, to maintain those for after-hours, you know, evening use by, by the college students that frequent those steps, so. ZBA's conditional approval should be added to the notes, so that's great. Dumpsters, we, these dumpsters, the truck would come in, come around the site, front-load the dumpsters and back up slightly, just as, as we had talked about a moment ago, and then exit out through the property, so that should work, you know, really well. And we, we would like to, you know, extend our, the invite to, to have the ladders next door, continue to have their dumpsters there. You know, if it's going to become an issue, we'd rather not get into granting easements for their dumpster use, but it's there now, it seems to be working well, and we want to be, you know, good neighbors to them. Again, propane tank deliveries, this would happen at off-hours, but they would come in, fill up the propane tank and then continue out as any other, you know, vehicle would come in. The plan now includes a drive-up ATM. Again, we're, we're looking to keep this contractual agreement and Midstate's not looking to break that contract with the bank. The ZBA, another note in there I just wanted to call attention to is the ZBA has specified that the southern parking area is not to be used for employees. Just want to correct that, it was, the ZBA was looking to have the parking at Gould Terrace used for, the priority there would be for, for staff parking and for patrons would use the on-street parking down here. They didn't, I don't recall that they ever stated that they intended that this is not allowed to be used by Midstate faculty, which it would be, because we need to provide ADA access and with the, the limited amount of people that would be coming to this building, with more than enough on-street parking, so they will be using the southern lot for employee parking. We will be limiting and not, not advertising that, that people frequenting the building, patrons wouldn't be using that upper lot. The business next door, south of ladders, appears as the property, it's a driveway. Again, we just talked about that. We'd like to, to allow them to remain using that, but we're not looking to, to add in an easement tonight. And then again, the drainage, if you guys could just provide a little bit more clarity as to what you're looking for there.
I have a question regarding that, the use of that exit by ladders, the American Legion.
Yep.
Do you have any evidence that they have ever been given permission to travel over that parking lot?
I don't have any evidence, Bob. You?
No, I have no evidence.
So it could be an implied easement. It could, it could be argued that it's an implied easement.
Well, can I speak to this? I'm Kevin Baum, counsel. It is a, potentially a possibility that they have a prescriptive easement to use it. That would mean that it's been used for a period of more than twenty years without permission. Our understanding is that this has been, this is currently with permission, our understanding is that that has been the case. I don't know how long the use has been, whether it meets it, but I, I'm hesitant for the board to speculate as to rights that aren't being asserted by the neighbor. I mean, we could certainly, we're not proposing to shut it off, we certainly don't want to do that. We're hopeful that the ultimate traffic flow doesn't require that, and so I just, I guess I would ask, I, I'm a little nervous to hear a suggestion that, that there is a prescriptive easement here without any claim being made by the, by the neighbor. And again, the goal here is to continue to allow permissive use. If there is more of a right, they certainly have the ability to assert it, but to, to our knowledge, they never have.
I just wanted to hear your explanation.
So I think that, that runs through most of the notes. I mean, I can go through just a couple of notes that I took while we were, you know, looking through the, the photos. There was a statement of, is this enough information on the drainage plan? Again, we'd be, just wondering what other information would you guys would be looking for there. The, the parking sign, you know, we, we are looking to allow off-hours use. The intent of that sign was to, you know, show that, that this, this parking lot is for, for local businesses. We, we can definitely remove that sign if it's, if it's, you know, too specific and, you know, we're not going to be able to include every business in town on those signs. ADA accessibility, we do have an accessible entrance for both the employees on that southern parking lot and for patrons on the northern parking lot. There's kind of two accessible means of entrance. We do know that as you guys do your re-grading of Main Street, that will change the grading of the sidewalk and we will have some work to do updating our accessible entrance into the building as that happens, and we're happy to do so when that time comes. So I think that's, that's about it for the, for the notes and kind of the updates from our last meeting. Are there any other questions?
With regard to the easement, I see that, that you've added a note regarding the easement to the plan. Would you be willing, would, would Midstate be willing to provide a recordable deed stating that?
Yeah, Bob or Kevin?
Yeah, I, I think the expectation is that that would be, if it's a condition of approval, we would provide a deed. Typically, that's something that, you know, in my experience, that's done as a post-approval condition between, you know, applicant's attorney and the town's attorney, and I assume that would be the case here. But yes, I was under the assumption at least that there would be a recorded easement after post-approval.
I just wanted to clarify that we're all on the same page, that, that seems, it seems to be the logical way to move forward to ensure that, you know, if, if this plan is lost somewhere, that there's still a record of that on the deed, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
I guess I'd like to know from staff what opinions on the report are that we received regarding drainage.
So, my thoughts, scribbles. You have photographs of the drainage structures, the van holes, we don't really have much information about the condition of the pipes, the size, any of the details, and we don't, we never got like an as-built plan, you know, so what was on, we still don't have a complete picture, they gave some photographs. I'm not qualified to assess if those are mean, you know, no offense to Brown Engineering, but, you know, that is a piece of, to have a, our engineer say, the information they've submitted, is it adequate? Does it look, does it look in good working order? So that, you know, and what are the size and sort of structure of the structures that are there and the pipes? We don't know that. You know, normally in a site plan, you would have those kinds of construction details and things included, and we know there've been some drainage issues, they've documented that in that upper corner, so that, how is that also being addressed, that erosion that's coming there onto the site? You know, clearly it is a problem, the work we're going to do on Russell Street should help with that, but it's not going to completely eliminate it. So is there, you know, what's been the maintenance over since 2006 of this, these, these structures? Are they filled with silt and material? That's kind of the, the biggest concern I would have, and just the overall, you know, we never had a drainage report and sort of that kind of sense of the calculation, is it, is it adequate for the amount of impervious surface there by today's standards? So that kind of a change of view. So those are my, those would be sort of the parameters I would ask the engineer to review, and possibly, I hadn't thought about this, but maybe the ADA adequacy of those ADA grades and that kind of thing of the parking spaces to the building. That was something that Peter Julia had brought up at the planning, zoning board meeting, so.
And how do we all feel? I mean, the applicant seems to be wedded to the current plan for the southern parking spaces.
Say that again?
I'm looking at the, the parking spaces and circulation in the south.
Yep.
And we talked about reconfiguring for various reasons, the applicant seems to think it's, it's okay as is and...
My position on that is that, you know, they've documented existing conditions and proposed to move forward with those. I don't think there's anything in our zoning that requires, you know, that any of the changes that we're discussing be made. If there were a clear standard that were not being met, I would think... If there were a clear standard that were not being met, I would think we would feel more comfortable asking them to change things. And while I do see that, you know, there would be a general benefit to the town of reconfiguring that parking in light of, you know, I think reconfiguring the parking as suggested in the sketch we saw tonight could allow walk-up access to the ATM. It could also provide, you know, just as much parking with more space for vehicles to pass back and forth on this parcel without encroaching on the other parcel. I do think it's generally better, but I don't think we're in a position to require it.
Apparently, they have an agreement for a drive-up, so.
Right. Well, I mean, if there were a condition that required that we... If there were, you know, a condition that required us to mandate that they change parking, they could change the contract based on the decision of the board. But I don't think we need to do that. I don't think we have the basis to do that. So I'm willing to accept... I'm willing to consider accepting the plan as proposed only because I think they've done a lot of work to provide us with a well-thought-out plan. They're not proposing significant changes. They did go above and beyond... They did a lot of work to document the existing conditions that they weren't responsible for installing. So they've provided photos. You know, I suspect that it wouldn't be that hard for us to infer pipe sizes from the photos if we had some, a few items from scale. And as far as the off-site drainage issues, you know, my feeling is that this is... This site is receiving material from an off-site source. I don't feel that it would be appropriate to require them to come up with a plan for stopping erosion from an off-site source onto their parcel. I do think that the town's work to remedy drainage on Russell Street will help this. It should, at least. But, you know, my thinking is that, you know, I'd like to identify a few conditions of approval and move forward tonight.
Open this to the public first? Does the public have any comments or questions?
Hi, Frank.
Hi, Frank Miller. And just reviewing, I believe the village commercial zone doesn't have any requirements for parking other than residential use. But in looking at all of the elements that have been addressed, this, I believe, makes a very good use for an existing structure. A lot of elements have been reviewed to try to make it the best that it can be for what it is and where it is, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
I have a remark. I believe that June is correct, that we should have a more detailed assessment of the drainage capacity of the system where we have had substantial increase in flow in our events, even in the last 15 years.
Well, we can talk about whether that would be a condition or something to put this off for, but Matt?
Well, I just want to say the... It doesn't sound like it has anything to do with the approval of tonight, but the zoning board did ask that parking up top be employees and that the south side was not for employees. And that was how it was interpreted by me at the zoning board meeting. Additionally, have you guys seen the letter from their partner? It's not a competitor, but Spear Memorial is not a competitor of theirs, but they also raised concerns about the influx of business to this part of the south end of Main Street. It's just a good letter to see in comparison to what they originally said was going to be used for business and how many people were coming and going. And then they also stated, "Well, when it was a bank, it saw, you know, multiple times the traffic." Well, that traffic was in a short period of time, maybe seven minutes, four minutes, not people there for the entire stay. And also, I know they say they want to be good neighbors, but, you know, allegedly, when they originally went up to Midstate, this outfit said they were going to be paying their taxes. They would continue to pay taxes, and that was a word. And I know nothing can be done tonight, like that's legislation for taxes and nonprofits. But what I'm saying is they haven't lived up to their word. So I just advise the board, get things in writing from this outfit, because what they say, how they want to be good neighbors, is possibly not accurate. They told on the ZBA meeting, they told the Panther Pub owners that, you know, "We're going to work with you to the best we can." And that's because they were up here standing and just stating their concern about it. But then, later in the meeting, when the zoning board made a stipulation that they had to, you know, leave parking, open up parking to other patrons in the area, their council was having a fit, that he couldn't talk, and he was having... Because he pretty much said, "Listen, our insurance isn't going to let that happen, so please don't put that as a stipulation." So I just am here tonight to say that everything they say might sound peachy and keen, and they want to be neighborly, but when they get the permit and things are done, they're going to turn their back possibly and do whatever they want. So whatever we can get binding, I hope we can get binding from this place, because I just feel that they don't have a, allegedly don't have a track record of standing up to the word, and I don't feel like they're going to downtown. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of these comments?
I would, especially since I was referred to in them. And I'm actually glad that came up, because I wanted to clarify that tonight as well. What we were trying to raise when it became a, the shared parking became a condition of approval, is not an unwillingness to do it or a statement that we couldn't do it, but I wanted to clarify, if I could in the condition, what Bob had indicated earlier, which is, our intent is to work with the neighbors for after-hours parking, but that has to be subject to some written agreement and some rules. Because, one, it's a potential issue for insurance, and, two, there has to be some limitation on it, because it's after-hours parking, and after-hours parking may not be clearly defined. So we need the ability to put rules into place, so that we know that Panther Pub patrons are not going to leave cars overnight. We're not going to interfere with patient use. And that was my goal, and my hope was to get that on the record, to clarify that condition of approval. I wasn't able to, so I'm actually glad it came up now, because that was one of the things I wanted to do tonight. And again, it is not an attempt to backtrack, but rather just to clarify that, yes, we want to share the parking. It doesn't... It's there. It's a benefit. But obviously, Midstate is a private landowner that needs to have the ability, for liability purposes, to, you know, control that use and to put reasonable restrictions on it, and sensible restrictions. So I wanted to be able to respond to that. I don't know if anyone else on the team has comments in response to the other things said.
I would like to comment on the drainage. So some questions were brought up about the drainage. And we did go out, as Chris said, and open the manholes and inspect them and took the pictures. And as you can clearly see in the pictures, the pipes look virtually brand-new. This site was constructed in 2006, and we have a letter from Bud Crane talking about the inspections and the acceptance by the town. There's no indication that there's a problem with the on-site drainage. And in fact, as much as you can try to do drainage computations for a proposed site, an existing situation is clearly more actual than any estimate you can come up with. And in looking at this site, the pipes are draining well. They're in good condition. They've had regular maintenance. We had the maintenance guy there from the bank, and he said they had routinely cleaned those basins out. I know Midstate is committed to keep maintaining the site, but there's really no evidence. So I did not include a narrative with that report, because it seemed as though the pictures were self-evident that the pipes were there and in good working order. And as Chris said, we happened to go on a day that it was raining, and there was lots of runoff, and they were working fine. So I just wanted to put that in.
I'd like to thank you for the narrative you're providing verbally tonight, just because we... You know, for those of us that don't inspect manholes every day, it's hard to tell if those are in good condition or not. So thank you.
So how are we all feeling at this point? We have a bunch of issues on the table, some very minor clerical things and some a little bigger.
I think any issues with drainage, you know, considering they're not proposing changing to existing drainage and that uses plan to continue, I do think it would be nice for the town to have some drainage calculations and information on those structures, but I think the time for us to ask for them would have been 2006. I don't think it's right to encumber this applicant who's taking over a site that's been functioning well for, you know, 16 years to go back and back calculate that information. And likewise, you know, with the parking, it's existing. If it were in, you know, like, you know, we deal with non-conforming issues on sites on a regular basis, and to my knowledge, there's nothing about the existing configuration that is non-conforming or doesn't, you know, doesn't meet any of our existing standards for the layout of parking. It may not be the best, but at the same time, I don't feel right asking them to change... I don't feel right requiring them to change it as a condition of the approval for this site plan. That's kind of where I stand on that, but I'm willing to consider other board members.
I think the number of years that it's been there, and there haven't been any obvious issues going on, I think at this point in time, it seems pretty well. As we all know, if there's a drainage issue somewhere, we know it, so everybody knows it. So I agree with Phil. I think with Kent saying what he said about it, he knows about them. I just, I don't really think it's okay to have them have to spend more to find out about this, that we can see is working, and we haven't had any issues on the town side and the town streets, I don't believe, that we've heard of, that it's not functioning properly.
Most of the issues are from...
Up above, going on to them.
And if the issues on Russell Street are going to be mitigated, then there's going to be less load on this site.
Right.
I mean, you can presume that, yeah, I mean, storms. All things being equal and us getting the same storms moving forward, if they improve the drainage on Russell Street, this site will have less runoff to deal with as well.
My feeling is that we should have an engineer sign off on the capacity of the drainage system. This is a change of use.
But nothing about the change of use exacerbates the drainage. That's the issue. This is an existing site, not a proposed site.
We have changing conditions.
We have no additional impervious area.
Peak flow is increasing. I think we should at least have... We should have somebody sign off on capacity of this system.
Not due to the change of use, it's not increasing.
I agree.
And it's functioning fine, and there's no evidence that it's not.
So are we moving towards approval conditionally, June?
I've got some scribbles here.
There'd be a lot of conditions going.
I see two conditions of approval that have jumped to light. So one is that the ZBA conditions of approval should be added as a note to the plan and that the easement for the right-of-way off of Gould Terrace be recorded once this is approved. Are there any others that...
That's what I see.
June, did you have a comment?
The other thing, and I don't know if it's been cleared up or not, but when I read the zoning board's conditions, I read it as employees were not supposed to park in the south. Seems like they believe they can park in the south end. Do we have any clarification on that? What the zoning board's actual ruling was, if employees were supposed to park in the south parking lot or not, June?
I would say we might need to wait until the ZBA has...
So you guys also can clarify that. I mean, because it is a site circulation issue related to the change of use. So I would actually agree with what was said in the public hearing, which may still be open.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have luck.
That the discussion, the spirit of the discussion, in my recollection, was, you know, whether the minutes accurately captured that, and the notice of decision with these conditions did not say that they can't use it for employee, and that's what they're arguing. But the discussion was definitely have employees park up top and leave, you know, the patrons to come in off of Main Street. That's why I've been kind of pushing for this site change around the configuration. So I think that's something for this board to consider. Do you want to clarify that condition to say, except for, you know, employees that may need the ADA access, that the intent of the parking lots off of Main Street are to be strictly reserved for patrons, clients, customers, whatever you want to call them? Because that is really the way the discussion went, whether we capture that properly. But you certainly, with that change of use, have that right to look at site circulation, in my opinion. Okay? I think the other thing that I was just going to add in my scribbles here that keeps coming out, the application was for a medical facility. They did not show in the original site plan the ATM. We've since added that. We've observed the, you know, they're not showing that use of that driveway coming in and off of the neighboring property. That affects site plant, you know, the site circulation. So at least have them revise to show the existing conditions. If the idea is to have ladders, people coming off of that site and go out the way, out the exit, and if there's no changes, you know, so they can go by the ATM and out, it's a pretty open stretch between the two properties. You can also require landscaping or a fence or something along there to delineate people coming from the ladders dumpster area to kind of go straight and then go out that way. So you don't have that. I'm just concerned about that conflict of people exiting at the entrance. So there can be, you know, physical barriers of some sort established that would look nice. They have granite posts and white fencing like we have around the common. They have that on the other edge of the parking lot. So that might be some kind of a suggestion to clarify in better direct traffic. I mean, that's what you use, you know, and have it look aesthetically good. If there's no written easement, then it shouldn't conflict with that. The idea of a prescriptive easement, Ladders hasn't been there for 20 years, so that's a moot point. So, and then if there's going to be an easement for the upper, you know, something documented, as their attorney mentioned, it would be an agreement, you know, go back and forth with him to write it, and our attorney would review it. We'd want money in escrow account for that legal review. The town shouldn't have to pay for the legal fees to review that. We've done that with Riverside Landing recently, just kind of cleaning that up today, actually. So that's routine to do, just, you know, making sure that they're paying for the cost of the application. So, yeah, I think, you know, again, the, you know, asking them to show us the existing conditions, if you want to, if they're not going to change it, if you don't want to push that on that reconfiguration as I, you know, is just merely a suggestion. I do think that a barrier along there, fencing or landscaping, asking them what they feel it could be viable to propose, and ask them to put it on the plan, like you did with Lakes Region Mental Health. What's the planting? What's the treatment? You know, what's the fence? Show what it's like and give us that detail, and show that traffic pattern accurately. You know, I do have some concerns that we were told very clearly in the application for the zoning board in this board, there was 12 employees. Tonight, it's 12 to 16. So, you know, there's... And I think you can clarify the intent of where employees should be parking for this site, as discussed at the ZBA meeting. And then lastly, on the ZBA application, part of the issue about that that was discussed, I mean, I don't want to go on and on about this, but the ZBA reviewed the application, written application materials, where it said... Oh, no, I lost it. Oh. Oh, dear, I lost it. It was put in writing that they would continue the off-hours... It was, it was put in writing that they would continue the off-hours use to, if approved, MidState intends to continue to allow off-hours use of parking area by the Flying Monkey and other nearby businesses, reducing on-street parking. So, they put it in writing. And then when it became a condition, there was a sense of, oh no, you know, so he already clarified that. But I do think the ZBA kind of put that there, because they said it. So, that's why.
Maybe the importance of what off-hours means, is it six o'clock to two in the morning?
In the findings of fact, there was discussion, and I don't have, I could dig it out, but it was, you know, the hours would be nine to five, Monday to Friday, off-hours meant. Other than that, that's the implication. So...
Could I, could I speak up for a minute? This is Bob McLeod, CEO of MidState. A couple of items I want to talk about here. First off, the sign that was on the pole next to Ladders was a discussion I had with Sue Chow, who, you know, seems to head Ladders. And while the building was only partially occupied, I said, you know, why not? If it helps you with your flow in your, your building, you know, put that sign up. That was just being a good neighbor. She also understood that when we fully operationalize the, the building, that she may not, Ladders may not have that saying luxury. So, I want to, I want to be clear about that. The second thing is that although we certainly think our business model will be closing the business, you know, at eight to five, right now, our business model may change a bit. So, hours may be a little longer than that at some point. So, when we talk about after-hours parking for other businesses, keep in mind, number one, we're not obligated, it's our parking lot, number one. And number two, when we do allow people to park there, we need some agreement so that we can avoid liability. And I've already talked to Panthers about that, and they're all for it. They're, they're in complete agreement. I've talked to Alice Ray about it, and they're in complete agreement. So, you know, a little bit, I'm getting, you know, I get a little frustrated with this because we're trying to be good neighbors. I heard a gentleman in the audience that, for whatever reason, doesn't like MidState, and that's fine. But we've tried to be good neighbors. We've been honest about our approach here. But, you know, in the end of the day, we have to run a business, and we'll do everything we can to help the area of businesses so they can be profitable as well. But we can't do it with the prescriptive nature of that we have to close at five, or we have to do this, or we have to do that. You've got my word, and you can put it down on paper, that we will work with the local businesses to have parking there after hours, period. And that's all I have to say. But I have to tell you that, in all due respect, whether it be the ATM or whatever the case may be, the ATM has been this, and the community bank was built in the, in the mid-eighties, and there's never been any flow problem there. Well, letting Ladders keep their dumpster where it is, I mean, quite frankly, it's our property. If, if, if we weren't good neighbors, we'd tell them to move their dumpster because the rubber guy can't pick it up, because it's on our, they'll have to go on our property. Please. I mean, I have to ask you to, you know, at least be reasonable about the approach here. We have ample parking. We're gonna keep that building looking good, if not better. And we're doing very little to the outside that's gonna be different than what it is today. I mean, all of our work will be inside. So, you know, thank you for, for letting me hear this out a bit. But, you know, I mean, we have to have some, some, some reason to protect our property. Quite frankly, I can't have every business just willy-nilly park in there and keep their cars there overnight. We have to have some control, and you'd want it in your property as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I actually ask for clarification from the ZBA meeting?
Yeah.
So, what was the, is this a specific language to allow off-hours parking? And I'm just wondering how specific that was. And, I mean, not to imply any bad intent or anything, but if one wanted to, could one simply say, well, we're always running a little bit, and therefore you can't ever park here, by the language of that? I'm just wondering, what, what was the language? And if it is just off-hours parking, what exactly does that mean? And...
Got the, these minutes haven't been approved yet, but they're, so, but I think they're very accurate, you know?
My concern is that any, any of our lang, you know, if we're referring back to the ZBA minutes for language to include on conditions of approval, and the minutes have not been reviewed yet, we may be having to amend them later.
You can continue for another month till they're, you know, so can I, you want to, so, but the, so when the zoning board, they had, I think it's six criteria for a special exception that they went through. They do findings of fact. It's a little bit of a different process. And one of the findings of fact was that they, then they vote on these. They discuss them and vote, you know, they go, they hear all the testimony, and then they have the public hearing, they close it, and then they do findings of fact. So, they, one of, finding of fact number 10, the use would primarily take place 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, while many surrounding businesses are more active at night. And that was based on the discussion and information that was given to the ZBA. And then, so, one of the conditions that is, let's see, they, the third one, the use, they assess this as one of the, one of the criteria. The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located. And they said, they all voted on it, four to, four to nothing, that it was, that was true with the condition that the use will be, as developed, will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located, as long as the applicant continues to practice, continues the practice of allowing off-hours use of the eastern parking lot on parcel 11046 on, by nearby businesses, as offered by the applicant in the application for special exception. So...
And implied in that is the practice of nine to five, and presumably some kind of...
Based on that fact.
And some kind of buffer in there to allow, like...
I mean, primarily nine, you know, eight to five, I think it was.
I don't believe there's anything on the site plan that specifies hours of operation either, which means that, you know, if they decided that it was in their business model to stay open until 10, they could. I mean, if we approve this as it is, if they decided that they wanted to have a clinic that was open until midnight, they could. And if they chose that, you know, these are their rights as their business. You know, if they find that it's, it's profitable to be open until midnight, and that means foregoing, allowing access to their parking lots, which they're not required to have, they can. And I think that they should be able to.
They've also agreed for the ZBA to waive some of those rights.
I think we have a piece of property with a business on it that's been functioning for how many years? And I don't recall really any terrible things happening or a lot of complaints, drainage, parking, traffic flow, anything. And now, all of a sudden, we're coming, trying to come up with all this. I just, I, I don't, I don't see it.
So, how do we, do we feel this too much to deal with tonight to...
We have another comment on drainage. It's really important that the town maintains a standard and to require that applicants meet current stormwater standards for peak flow events. If we don't do that, it's gonna set a bad precedent, and you're not gonna be able to enforce it.
I agree.
We have, we have increasing problems with storm events becoming more intense and more frequent. And we, we don't know what the engineering of this system is. We need to know what, you know, specifically what the diameters of the pipes are and, and, you know, what the type of pipe was used. I, I know it's, what, 16 years old? I don't, you know, if I put a plan in that was 16 years old, I don't think anybody would approve it at this point, unless it was proven that it was adequate.
We do have some of that information, I believe.
So, I'm just asking for an engineer to stamp a report and say, this is what it is, and it meets current standards.
We have numerous examples of existing infrastructure that doesn't have to meet existing standards. If you have a house that was built in 1900 and has knob and tube wiring, and you pull a building permit to renovate your kitchen, you don't have to tear out all of the knob and tube wiring. All you have to do is, is put in wiring that meets the current standard in the part you're building.
Particularly for...
And that's, that's what we're looking at, is, you know, we have a plan that was approved 16 years ago, and presumably, you know, I'm going to rely on, on the engineer for the town that was at the time. I don't think it's right for us to ask...
We don't have a specific plan. We don't know what's actually there. All we have is some photographs.
Just to clarify, you do have the existing...
There is a plan.
...that Horizons drew 16 years ago.
Thank you.
So, that, those original...
I'd like to see an engineer put his stamp on it and say that it's, it's, it meets current standards for stormwater peak flow event. You know, that's the precedent that I want to see this board holding.
Okay, so, where do we feel we are now?
I think the easement was one thing, and what was the other thing that you said?
That's an easy one. I think that's agreed upon.
No, I know. And what was the other one?
I would like, it's, it's been suggested that the conditions of approval from the ZBA be included on the plan as well.
Oh, right. Yep.
And does that need to be clarified in terms of off-hours?
I think if, we can issue a conditional approval that requires that they be included, and once they're clarified, I think it would be up to the applicant to include those.
Have all these small changes in terms of will versus intends, and all of them made it into the plan yet, the most recently revised plan? I haven't...
No.
No. So...
So, I'm trying to help.
Maintenance of the stairs, is that the question?
Yeah, that, exactly, yeah. So, that needs to turn into a will.
Actually, yeah.
And is the parking spaces updated yet?
Parking was, the numbers were corrected on that. Yep.
There's seven in the west, in the southern lot, 25 in the northeast lot, and 14 in the northwest lot.
And then there's the ADA issue. Do we need to have...
That one's a hard one for me to assess. So, I think, you know, that would be...
It's gonna...
They have ADA parking spots. I don't...
Doesn't it depend on the grading of the Main Street construction project? So, that's subject to change anyway, is it not?
Not, it won't change the grade that, on their site.
Oh, okay.
There's a diagram in here somewhere.
I'm just looking at... So, if you just hold on, if you just hold on a second, I can... I was looking for what was represented a month ago about the stairs.
I do recall requesting that a note, a general note be added. That was in your email of the 15th, wasn't it?
Yeah, so...
May I, may I ask a question about that? I don't think, I think public's still open. I don't, I just, I'd just like to clarify it again. Our intent is to maintain those stairs. I guess, I'm just a little unclear what the, what the note would need to be. These stairs are on MidState's property. They're the property owner. They would have a responsibility to keep them maintained for their employees and any users, and obviously would take on the risk. I guess one of the concerns that was raised by Chris earlier and I share is, is a, again, it gets back to the potential liability, is a, is an obligation that goes from being a, it's something that would be just a general property owner's obligation to something that is a condition of, of site plan approval that is now a municipal, you know, enforcement issue. And I, I'm just, is the building inspector going to make sure that the, you know, ice is cleared on a daily basis? That's just my concern as enforcement. And, and it just seems to me that as a property owner, MidState bears the risk of any liability of any slip and fall if those stairs aren't maintained. And obviously, it's in its best interest. It just gets down to the, the concern of who, who's enforcing that. And again, is it something that has to be done 24 hours a day, additional lighting, because we know that college students are using these to cut through? Or is it something that is to protect the employees and the patrons? And obviously, it's in MidState's best interest to do that, and it certainly will. Just trying to avoid, you know, an additional avenue for liability if, if it's not really needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
June?
So, oops, I'm running out of battery again. The, on the minutes of the February 17th planning board meeting, which you approved a couple of weeks ago, there's a paragraph about some of the discussion, and it says, "But the applicant was okay with a note on the site plan accepting responsibility for winter maintenance of the stairs to be used by the public." And that, so that was in the minutes. So, that's why I brought it up. So, I would just like to suggest one other thing that, again, I think your decision tonight is to, if you want to do a conditional approval, that's fine. We can start thinking about that. You probably should close the public hearing at some point, and to kind of keep the discussion for the board here, or see if there's any other final comments.
I have a question.
And then, again, I would just reiterate that you don't have a full existing conditions plan. You know, we had some changes. By adding in another use, the ATM, I know it's there, but the implication on the application that was originally filed was that it was being removed. Now, it's being noted that that's remaining. So, that's another use that's on the site that wasn't originally in that application. Okay? So, that's why I've brought that up, and it's highlighting that parking problem. Now, I also noticed that there's the access, that Ladders is using, you know, is accessing this property to exit onto Main Street. That's not shown there. So, either, if they don't intend to continue that, how are they gonna stop it? And that's why I was suggesting perhaps let them come up with either show it, or show us how it's gonna stop, through some fencing, landscaping, something there, because it is a safety issue and that is part of your issue. I think the drainage, I understand what you're saying, you know, that I trust Brown Engineering's review of it. I think, to me, in some ways, these public safety and circulation things, and then this issue that, I do want to say that the zoning board, in my understanding of what their comments were, was really that employees should park it up off of Gould Terrace and not use the access on Main Street. So, because of traffic on Gould Terrace and just the adequate, you know, it, just being able to keep as much parking on these Main Street areas, there, there are lots off of Main Street available for the turnover of the clients that they're gonna have. And again, you've been told that 12 employees now, tonight it was up to 16. So, things do change as we go and get into the details. But I would ask that you consider maybe a new revised plan and just continue for another month to kind of just really address the, the true existing conditions there, and add in notes that you, you know, like the ZBA conditions. If you wanted to suggest where employees should park or not park, you can add that in. Then, the easement, we could start, we could start working on that, you know, set up an escrow account. I think the last one was $600 to review the conservation easements, that kind of thing. So, I can work with them on that and get that deed kind of started and reviewed. And I think you'd have a better plan, you know, and a little more comfort and clarity at, when, maybe in another month, that, that would be something to consider.
There seem like a lot of details to put together quickly. Since our public...
I have one more question. I have one more question for the people from MidState.
Yes.
Do you plan on putting a gate on the stairs when you're not in, in operation during your daily hours or whatever? Or are you gonna leave the stairs open so that people on Gould Terrace can continue to walk down to Main Street during after-hours?
Our intention is not to be placing gates on the...
Our intention is not to be placing gates on the property. It's functioned for the last 30 years. We'd like to just keep the site as is. But we would ask that, it sounds like there would be some conditions, but none of them sound like they would be prohibitive of a board vote and approval tonight. You know, we're happy to update the plan. This should go, the neighboring properties, dumpster and driveway, and some of these other items, but we would ask if you could move this ahead.
Before I close the public hearing, would any members in the public like to speak?
Yeah, I'll answer some questions. Yeah, so, to answer your question, Mr. McLeod, I don't have a problem with Midstate Health. What I find challenging is where I'm from, good neighbors pull their weight in the town. And that comes down to paying taxes. This town is suffering and being crippled by the tax rate going absolutely through the roof. And I'm not blaming Midstate Health for that. That's ridiculous. What I'm asking is possibly, as an organization of yourself, rethink the contribution you can give as a good neighbor, and pay some taxes in the town of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd speak on, in fact, the ZBA and the planning board does not have the authority to act to obligate an applicant to give to their neighbors any part, piece of function of their property. That's a nice thought and talk about this parking issue, but that is solely between budding property owners, and should not be any sign of an obligation by any board, whether select board, planning board, or zoning. That's between neighbors. It shouldn't be part of this discussion. In fact, of course, a village commercial zone has no obligation for parking. The fact this site more than complies with whatever number sets it needs for both its employees and its projected customers is unique. So, the other thing is their drainage system most likely was designed for a two-inch-per-hour volume velocity index for when it was constructed in 2006. And since that number hasn't changed from any thing from the state government, the existing system would be in compliance until that number changes. I believe the drainage system is grandfathered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Now, 8:07, and I hereby close the public hearing at last. So, how do we feel? Continue, or motions?
I will make a motion that we approve the site plan with the following conditions of approval. Sorry, tangled up here. One is that the ZBA conditions of approval be added to the plan as notes, that the easement for the parking off of Gould Terrace for, to be, sorry.
Future parking.
Yeah, so, the legal review, sorry, that an easement be granted to the town for the purpose of access to budding parcels, and that an escrow account be provided for legal review. A note should be added to the plan stating, clarifying that to restrict traffic on budding residential neighborhoods, the parking off of Gould Terrace should be designated for employee parking, and that any overflow employee parking can, overflow or ADA compliant employee parking can be on the Main Street lots. And that is all.
Was there was a change of the will, right? That wasn't in here yet, right?
There's no note. Oh, oh.
Intent's the will for the clearing?
Actually, there's no, there's no mention of that on the plan at all. And I actually have reservations about requiring the town enforcing any kind of maintenance requirement. Despite our discussion earlier, I don't feel comfortable requiring any specific maintenance schedule for snow removal on the stairs. I think they have their own liability to cover there. The town will clear the sidewalks. I don't think that's something the town should be enforcing.
I'd like to second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I would just add, I'd like not adding in the will either. I think by encouraging the employees to park up there, we know that chances are those stairs are going to be maintained during business hours. And if, after business hours, I don't think we can require them to be maintaining those stairs for other people that they're generously allowing to use that parking lot after hours. So, you know, I think we, as you had mentioned earlier, this, these parking lots have been there for 20-plus years. This business has been here for a long time. People have been,
And I'm concerned that their hours may change. I think they should have the ability to set their own hours for parking, and who uses them in off-hours.
Exactly.
Mike, did you want to say anything on Zoom? Okay. Just checking in with you over there.
I feel that neglecting to address the specifics of the stormwater drainage system is a bad precedent for the town.
I would like to clarify that if they were proposing new structures or site work, I would be in full support of requiring drainage calculations. My only reservation is that, you know, it's built and done, and it was built to code, it was built to standards 16 years ago.
All in favor of approving with the conditions?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
So, did Michael vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I should have waited a moment longer, but yes.
And as a, just to clarify our rules of procedure, the selectmen position is a voting position, is it not? So, you are welcome to vote, but you can abstain if you choose.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Approved.
Okay.
How did you vote?
Oh, I didn't vote. Aye. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the staff and the applicant for working through this process. And, you know, I think that we have a good path forward that will, I'm confident, will serve the town and the business, the applicant, while moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, next up, do we have any informational or pre-application reviews?
No.
Next is other business. Our members of the board and planning staff, there's a joint meeting with the ZBA coming up. I guess that's our next meeting on April 5th.
Which is a Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay.
We decided on a time yet?
On the zoning board meeting's at 7:00, so, and I get in touch, we didn't get in touch with them to clarify about the time, and we can,
Here?
Yes, here. I do think that we need to think about an agenda for that, and so maybe, John, now that you're chair, I can put you into the zoning board chair, although they may elect a different chair that night, just to throw it all up. But we'll, can we just work it out with you, and then, okay. And we'll get back to you about the, clarifying the time. I think it probably will be 7:00, because that's their normal meeting time.
I don't know if there's any, like, standard procedure here in terms of who would host that meeting, or a joint meeting, or?
Yeah, we actually, Joseph looked that up. It's, it was the,
Planning board.
Planning board is supposed to chair it, but really, the joint meetings are typically to address applications, like in this case, where you could all both hear the same thing, and all hear at the same time. It would have been a good, this would have been a good application to have a joint meeting around. So, the purpose of this meeting is more of a discussion about the zoning ordinance and zoning in general, and getting to know each other.
Information gathering for us.
Yeah, great.
As a subcommittee report, I can say that the CIP committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow from 12:00 to 1:00. There is a Zoom, like, if anybody wants to attend, but tomorrow's going to be the first meeting of the CIP committee.
Thank you. We look forward to hearing more.
It will be here.
Downtown field trip, tentatively May 5th.
Which is a Thursday, right?
Would that be at our standard time?
So, the item B really about the discussion of the meeting time, that was something we'd thrown out the last meeting. Rebecca did point out that our bylaws do say 6:30, so if we did want to change that,
We need to notice it as a bylaw change.
Yeah, we'd have to do a bylaw change, so.
I would probably just do 6:30.
It says 6:30. I think for a downtown field trip, we could easily, we've done that for other site visits, you know, with proper notice, just saying that night, we're going to meet. If you wanted to go earlier because of, you know, I think we'll have daylight, but it might be, so, we have another meeting to kind of think about that, but it's just more of a reminder. So, if you wanted to do it at 5:30 or something.
Yeah, I was going to say, would 5:30 work? Would 5:00 work?
And how fast you walk.
4:30? How much do we want to see?
I think, actually, I was going to have, walk around with Joseph, so why don't we kind of, we can map out a time, kind of field trip, and get back to you before, in the next month.
Thank you, Jim.
Hey, thanks.
It is currently 8:15, and I'd like to open the meeting for public comments.
General public comments?
8:16, and I'd like to close public comments.
I move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Michael.
All right.